Good evening and welcome to the February 7, 2023, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. People wishing to speak must sign up by 6 o'clock by using the Qminder kiosk just outside the council door. Please see the courier if you have any questions. Let the record reflect that all members are in attendance except for Mayor Protam Johnson, and I need a motion to excuse her. Moved by Ms. Abuzawater, seconded by Dr. Wells. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? So she is excused, eight to zero. Please silence any electronic devices. If you must take or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the chamber. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence, and I would like us to remember Akuria Hinton, I hope I pronounced her first name correctly, wishing her a recovery. She was a young girl who was shot while she was sleeping, an eight-year-old girl, and I know that GPD and the Mother Standing Against Gun Violence and Crime Stoppers and community members are doing a walk right now to try to find information on who did that. So if we would keep her and her family in our thoughts. Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Hoffman, could you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome speakers to address council on specific agenda items. During the first meeting of the month, time is dedicated for speakers to address council on non-agenda items. Speakers are allotted three minutes for comments. The city of Greensboro is committed to promoting an environment that is free of discrimination, bias, and bullying. Zoom participants are requested to mute their microphones until they are called upon to speak. All meeting attendees are expected to respect speakers and council deliberations. People disrupting the meeting will be removed from the meeting. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they sit on a nonprofit board receiving funding from the city. All voters, all votes will be moved and seconded. The mayor will announce the vote total. This is the time for our ceremonial and presentation items. Item number one is a resolution to honor the memory of the late Mr. Aaron Wallace Shabazz. Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution to honor the memory of the late Mr. Aaron Wallace Shabazz. Whereas on December 2, 2022, the Greensboro community lost a beloved civil rights advocate with the passing of the late Aaron Wallace Shabazz. Whereas Mr. Shabazz received a Bachelor of Science degree in both business management and communications from Ramapo State College in Montwalk, New Jersey. Whereas Mr. Shabazz began his career as a senior mortgage collector for City Savings Bank in New Jersey. In 1992, he and his wife Joy, both members of the disabled community, relocated to Greensboro. Whereas in an effort to highlight resources and agencies to assist people with disabilities, Mr. Shabazz co-founded and operated the Guilford Advocacy Project for the Disabled in October 1992 as executive director. They advocated for the rights of persons with disabilities and cross-disabilities. For his efforts, Mr. Shabazz and the GAPD were awarded numerous awards and recognitions. Whereas most notably, in 1995, Mr. Shabazz received a distinguished committee award from the Greensboro Mayor's Council for Persons with Disabilities in 2003. Governor Mike Easley appointed Mr. Shabazz to the North Carolina statewide independent living council, and in 2016, he received the Brant Taylor Barrier Free Success Award from the Greensboro Partnership Chamber of Commerce. Whereas in 2001, following the passing of his beloved wife, the Guilford Advocacy Project for the Disabled was renamed the Joy A. Shabazz Center for Independent Living. Mr. Shabazz carried in his mission, carried on in his mission for justice and equality for persons with disabilities, continuing to provide services and resources free of charge to over 175 citizens annually. And in 2018, he retired as the center's executive director. Whereas Mr. Shabazz will be remembered as a dedicated advocate for the disabled community. He fought for inclusivity and total accessibility within society. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro that the City Council wishes to express his condolences and offer his sincere appreciation and gratitude for the many years of dedicated service of the late Mr. Aaron Wallace Shabazz. His legacy will be remembered by the lives he enriched and changes he brought about. That a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Mr. Aaron Wallace Shabazz as a symbol of the gratitude of the people of Greensboro for this, for his devoted support and contributions to the community. Adopted this the seventh day of February 2023.
That item is moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. Council, please vote. And that passes eight to zero. I know we have a number of speakers.
We do. We have a number of speakers here tonight, so. And I was asked by Dr. Ahmad to bring this forth, which is very well deserved. But we do have a number of speakers. Do we have some on Zoom as well? Angie?
I believe we've had one person to sign in on Zoom, and I believe Ms. Covington was going to speak on behalf of the group.
Okay, and I'm going to present her the, and she will get it to the appropriate persons.
Good afternoon, council. It is definitely a pleasure to be here with you. I'm BJ Gerald Covington. I'm definitely a community activist, and I was the last chair for the Shabazz Center. At present, I'm the chair for the disabled community in another junia, but it is headed up by Aaron's sister, Shonda. There are several family members who are here tonight, and I would truly appreciate it if you would allow them to stand. And I would like to say that it has truly and was a delight to be a part of the Joy A. Shabazz Center. And each and every day, when you do this type of work, you do it from your heart because you care, and it is about love for others. It is a difficult chore whenever you work with persons with disabilities, but yet and still someone needs to do it and be comfortable in doing it and willing to be of service to others even when you're not being paid. So with that, I would like to say thank you for honoring Aaron. Aaron was one of the good people that I had the opportunity to be a part of, and I served as his board chair for over 10 years. And his sister, Shonda, has now taken the baton and has opened the DACA Center, and we're working with that. And we serve the six surrounding counties, and it is truly, truly our pleasure and our delight. And thank you so very much. I truly appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you, BJ. Thank you so much. And may I say that you are a very dedicated individual. You have a disabled daughter, and you are a strong advocate. So working with the Shabazz Center as well is something that I know is in your heart's passion. So to this fam, to the family, they know they've got a strong person to really support their efforts. But I love what Mark does as well, Mark Springfield. I don't know if he made it. But I work with him a lot on trying to help place some of the disabled to find housing as well, because they struggle through that as well. And so I appreciate all his work as well. Is he coming?
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Everyone, I know personally on a personal level, but I also want to stand here and say gratitude and thank you for honoring Aaron's legacy, what he meant to this community, what he meant to our five core services here.
Can we have your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Mark Springfield. I'm a disability advocacy center. I'm a community inclusion specialist for the center. We now reside in Greensboro. Not the same agency as Aaron, it's run by his sister, Disability Advocacy Center, and we do the same five core services, but we have five extra services that are not mentioned in our five core services to the community. I don't need to go in each one of them. A lot of you know what they are. But I want to thank you for the legacy that you have bestowed on us tonight to honor his legacy and his family being here. And I was a much instrumental part of being a part of his family by being his caregiver, one of the caregivers, excuse me, and being along my friend of the family and of his legacy. He's taught me a lot what I do today. I'm sorry, I'm shaking a little bit, but I'm standing. Thank you again. If the family needs to say anything, I let them say it. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other speakers on this item? And if you would just give us your name for the record.
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Raymond McGregor. And my address is 2207 Newcastle Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. Yes. I don't know why, I just assumed I had the Barry White tone. My name again is Raymond McGregor Shabazz. I am Aaron Shabazz's brother. He leaves me feeling so proud, beyond, way beyond what you already know of him. His charitable constitution and character. Someone always refusing to be helped and determined to be independent while always going out of his way to hear the problems of someone else. And if there was something confronting you that you could not resolve yourself, if you mentioned it in passing only to him, he would dedicate himself to finding a resolution to that problem and then finding a way to get a message back to you that there was a different avenue, a different way of resolving that problem. Of all the problems he had physically, when he was married by the mercy of God to his wife Joy, who preceded him in moving on, each of them were in wheelchairs. He was able to drive during those years very cautiously, but he would never let you help him put his wife's chair into the backseat of the car. He was determined he cared for her, and he did for her on his own. That says it all in terms of his obligation to others and to him not acknowledging within himself any degree of being unable to function. If you heard you speak of an idea that you were genuinely concerned with and researching, don't mention it around him. Because when you would see him again, regardless of whether he was a close associate or not, he would hand you a book on the subject so you could continue to research. I have so many books that he's given me that I'm sorry I mentioned some of the subjects, because some of the subjects I was trying to make conversation. And he would get me a book on that subject. Hard to describe Aaron Shabazz. When he is a product of the state of New Jersey. My father, peace be upon him, when he realized that there was a tumor in Aaron's back, time stopped for that. And he did all that he could to research the best physicians and those who were known for being able to resolve the type of problem that he was growing, that was growing in his spine, intertwining with the spine, taking away his ability to function, taking his legs, moving up the spine and threatening respiration. Dad did all he could from every doctor he could find within the state of New Jersey, and then finally finding a doctor at Mount Sinai in New York. My wife and I were getting ready for religious services one Sunday, and I, and the TV was on, and it was one of those news programs where they were announcing the resolution of some type of theoretical, what had been a theoretical type of surgery, spinal surgery, microsurgery. And as I looked at it, it captured my interest because I knew this was one of the problems, one of the challenges that my brother was wrestling with. And as I saw them show pictures of the spine, I knew these bones. I knew the spine. I knew its curvature. I knew where the tumor was growing and so forth. And I called my wife, "Come take a look at this. This is Aaron." They never mentioned the patient's name. I said, "This is Aaron's spine." And they discussed the theoretical resolutions that had not been tried before to try to resolve what was happening in his back. Oh, God is merciful. The Creator of heaven and earth bestows his mercy as he pleases, when he pleases, where he pleases, and all of that only if he pleases. Praise be to him. He was pleased in this instance. They told us that Aaron's surgery in New York City at Mount Sinai Hospital would take about, oh, three, four hours. I don't mean to labor you with this, but when the doctors and these experienced surgeons at a place where they concentrate on resolving these type of spinal growths, they come out and say it would take three or four hours, you get a little nervous after the first six, seven hours. You, eyes begin to get pinkish as you approach 10 o'clock. They would come out and say, "He's doing well on the table." But you don't know what that means, doing well on the table. We don't know what restoration means. You don't know the strength of the heart. And by the time we reach 12 o'clock midnight, how these men did this, I do not know. They came out and say, "We finished," but we won't know what capacity he has within his body physically until he awakens on his own. So we're wondering, will he be able to move a pinky? We would have been praising the Almighty if he could just lift and turn his head. And he wound up being able to move from the waist up and flack his arms around. I'm speaking in regards to hope, not just my brother in this instance. Never feel forsaken. Within the year, within a year, he was walking with a cane. He was never supposed to be able to do anything below the waist. He was walking with a cane. And within a year from that, he was enrolled as a college student in college, working on a degree, which he received. He also met the love of his life, Joy. She was a victim of polio, but they complemented each other so well, it was as normal as you and I. And their challenges, accepting and defeating the challenges in life. He dedicated himself sincerely to being a resource to people who had medical problems, structural medical problems. He never, ever, ever said, "I can't." Remember that. He taught me a lot.
And we do appreciate.
He never ever said it was too much. So I just want you to know the character of my baby brother, what he was able to do, the way that he was able to grow in life, to get married, to graduate from college, he and his wife both, never, ever, ever saying, "It's impossible for me." And never letting you when he was in the chair, never letting you help him to load and unload that chair.
And we, we thank you for that message.
Let his mercy be the mercy he has sent out.
Item number E2 is a resolution to honor Joanne Katnick Luthenthal. Mrs. Hoffman?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Before I read the resolution, I'd just like to say, you know, I met Joan in 2011 when I was first running for city council. My good friend Judy Hyman felt that, that we needed to meet, and so she arranged that. And Judy and I appeared on the doorstep at the appointed hour at Joan's. It was in the morning. I don't know, 10, 10 o'clock or so, 10:30. And, you know, we spent a wonderful, probably 90 minutes or so together. And Joan invited her neighbor across the street, Cynthia Doyle, to join us. So, you know, I realized very quickly that I was in the presence of two really powerful women. What a, what a force. So it's, it's an honor and a pleasure for me to, to have asked for this resolution and to be able to read that. And Tony Bluthenthal, Joan's son, is here tonight with his wife, Betsy. And so we'll, after I've read this, I will give that to them, and Tony can certainly say a few words if he'd like to. A resolution honoring Joan Katnick Blumenthal. Where is Joan Katnick? Blumenthal was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, on February 28, 28, 1928, attended the public school system and graduated from Penn State University. Whereas Mrs. Blumenthal moved to Greensboro, North Carolina in 1950, where she began a journey of activism and community engagement, including involvement in underground interracial groups, community service organizations, political campaigns, Jewish organizations and religious institutions, higher education institutions and the arts. Whereas Mrs. Blumenthal participated in the civil rights movement in Greensboro, including the World War sit-in among various other sit-ins. She believed in the importance of public school desegregation, women's rights to serve as principals and administrators, and for school improvements as a real-world training ground. She helped develop social services seminars and internships for high school seniors who could work for credit volunteer services. Whereas community service has been evident by the fact that Mrs. Blumenthal has served, served on the Guilford County Board of Education, where through the establishment of the Lay Professional Advisory Committee on Human Relations Plan, which was, which she first chaired, that was later selected out of 366 submitted plans by the U.S. Department of Health, Education, and Welfare to serve as a model to school systems across the country. Whereas she served the Greens, on the Greensboro Zoning and Planning Commission, the Greensboro Community Council, the Greensboro Chamber of Commerce, the Guilford County, Guilford College Board of Visitors, the Board of Trustees for the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, the Board of Trustees for Guilford Technical Community College, the Board of Trustees for Temple Emmanuel, and was the first woman to serve on the Greensboro Housing Authority. Whereas additionally, she served as the president of the National Council of Jewish Women in Greensboro, as well as the chair of the 60-plus club, which was the city's first organization for older citizens. She served on the Greensboro Jewish Federation Board and the Greensboro Nursing Council, the Eastern Music Festival Board, and served as an officer or board member of the Friends Home Advisory Committee, the Family Services, Traveler's Aid, the United Daycare Services, the United Community Services, and the United Way. Whereas Mrs. Blumenthal's dedication and service brought several recognitions and honors, such as the Greensboro Chamber of Commerce's Nathaniel Green Award for Special Achievement and Leadership, the National Council of Jewish Women's Hannah G. Solomon Award for Outstanding Work on behalf of Children, the Alexis de Tocqueville Award for Voluntarism, the Ben Cohen Senior Award from the Jewish Federation, the Quota Club's 1974 Woman of the Year, and the Brotherhood Citation from the National Conference of Christians and Jews. And therefore now, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro that the city wishes to express its deep gratitude and appreciation to Joan Katnick Blumenthal, Bluthenthal, for her many years of dedicated public service and outstanding contributions to the community, that a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of Joan Katnick Bluthenthal as a symbol of the gratitude of the residents of the city of Greensboro for her contributions both locally and nationally.
Move the item. Second. So that is moved by Mrs. Hoffman, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. Council, please vote. And that passes eight to zero.
Hi, I'm Arthur Bleedenthal Jr., and this is my wife, Betsy Bleedenthal. I wanted her to be up here because in the last years of my mother's life, while she had three children, this woman did more for her, not only as a nurse, but as a daughter-in-law. had three children, this woman did more for her, not only as a nurse, but as a daughter-in-law, than probably all the children combined. And so I was asked to say a few things about my mother on behalf of receiving this resolution. I really didn't know what to say because unlike most people, to me, Joan Bleedenthall is my mother primarily. And as was mentioned, she was born and raised and went to college in Philadelphia. They used to call her Screen Door Joan because after a date, she had the habit of running into the screen door, screen porch and shutting the door before the date had a chance to try to kiss her. That ended when she met my father. He was visiting when he was going to UNC with his friend, his college friend. They visited Philadelphia. The friend was actually dating her at the time, but he put an end to that relationship and, and the rest of her days in Philadelphia, as they say, is history. After that, Greensboro became her home. And as I was growing up, I just know that she was gone a lot. And I was somewhat resentfully used to say that she was off trying to save the world. So I knew on some level that she was very involved in community service when I was growing up. I do remember that when I was in the second grade, mothers and fathers used to come to the class sometime to visit during school. And I remember that when my mom came, I was so proud because I thought she was so beautiful and I was just so proud of her. And some years later, I remember that one evening during a particularly turbulent time in the history of Greensboro, she was involved in the, the school board and developing the busing plan for integration of the public schools. And at the same time, or shortly thereafter, she was a member of the Greensboro Housing Authority. At a time when tensions were pretty high and many folks in public housing were upset about what, I'm not sure, but there was a, a meeting with the residents and the chairman of the Housing Authority called mom and advised her not to go and that none of the other members were going for fear of violence. And so my mother was very nervous and a little bit fearful. And for some reason, there was discussion about that in the House. I was very young. I was about ten or twelve years old, and I told her mother, "If you believe in something, you have to be willing to die for it." So on that note, she went to the meeting and obviously lived to tell the tale. And that was somewhat typical of her. Most people know her as a very strong woman, which she was, but maybe perhaps like a lot of us, she had to dig down deep to pull up that strength because she was also a pretty shy person, actually, who wrestled with her own demons of feeling and, and knowing her own self-worth and overcoming that innate timidity to tap into that inner strength. My wife, Betsy, and I were the only children here in Greensboro during the latter and the last years of her life, when she was no longer able to be involved in community service. And her involvement in life in general, general steadily diminished during a slow but steady decline before her passing, a period that lasted several years during which she needed more and more help. It was a very intense time for, and a not very happy time for Betsy and me. So I'm very grateful for this opportunity to remember and celebrate and honor the times when she was vibrant and strong and fully engaged with life and with this community that became the home she loved and to which she gave herself unselfishly and tirelessly for the great majority of her adult life. And thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you very much. And we now move on to the speakers from the floor portion of our meeting. Now is the time for speakers from the floor on non-agend items. This is an opportunity here from anybody wishing to speak. Generally, this time is a time of listening for counsel. The subject will be noted, and if it requires action or a request, the city manager will note as such and provide steps for any required response or after action. Please leave your contact details with the city clerk to facilitate communication. Our first speaker is Coriann Burt, followed by Christine Hoffner, followed by Paulette Montgomery.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Corinne Burt. Y'all are all aware of who I am. I've come to you many times before. We are still addressing the issue of tearing up my family's properties without permit, without cause, without justification. They are being called blighted properties. There's nothing wrong with these properties. I'm settling my husband's will. I was unaware that the, that I was the actual deed trustee until six months ago, right around six months ago. I have been floundering trying to get these houses together. I've been paying the taxes on them. I, I knew I had to pay the taxes and I didn't know what was up. I've been the highest taxpayer in Greensboro for several years now. We've got an issue of John Mandrano and Anthony Godwin thinking that they can walk up and say, "You'll either pay me, or you'll pay me, or you'll pay me, or you'll pay me. You'll have sex with me for the rent. I'll pay your utilities." Actually, the utilities are going on my checking account, my savings, my savings account. I was saving for my retirement. I'm just now getting my accounts together. I was being blockaded out of my accounts for many years. There's several people around who'll tell you, "I've been, you know, waiting to get that lost cash settled out." Some accounts go all the way back to nineteen seventy-five, when my very first public job. But we've got seventeen hundred families that these two individuals have thrown out in the cold, and they are walking around here as homeless people. And these, some of them are upper-middle-class, some of them are Irving Park people, some of them, you know, are HUD people, housing development people. But they have to have a place to go. Y'all have graciously, but somewhat ungraciously, provided these so-called pallet houses. These pallet houses are made from styrofoam. They took, I don't know the actual cost. I've heard rumors, people laughing and sneering and cheering, that it took a hundred dollars to build these houses. Well, anyway, I found a temporary place to go, ma'am. Please don't, don't butt me out.
Thank you.
My attorneys have been in touch with you.
Your time is up.
You even destroyed that, too. So hopefully y'all will adhere to your contracts.
Our next speaker is Christine Hoffner, followed by Paulette Montgomery.
My name is Christine Hoffner. Some five years ago, Greensboro noted in the Zara Jones filing that policing is one of the most pressing issues of today. Transparency for government officials is another. Unfortunately, both issues are still pressing. A few weeks ago, in discussing your legislative agenda, support for state legislators making police video more accessible was an item. The Rhino Times said Zach Matheny questioned supporting an issue that wasn't going anywhere. That's troubling if he's implicitly criticizing its substance, but Tammy Thurm explicitly endorsed asking for it as the right thing to do. And she's right. Police recordings made clear what the police report of Marcus Smith's homicide left out and exposed the circumstances under which Officer Hamilton shot Joseph Lopez dead. In Memphis, police footage was quickly released through an act of government transparency and in revealing the truth, opened the door to government accountability. Turns out, there's a route toward government transparency and accountability here and now in Greensboro, while not giving up on Raleigh. You may know about the State Task Force for Racial Equity in Criminal Justice, TREC. It recognized the efforts of Greensboro's Co-Responder Program. Well, TREC recommends providing citizen oversight boards and local governing bodies access to police recordings and requiring police recordings to be publicly released within forty-five days. Government transparency suffers from the requirement to petition a superior court judge when there is indecision and delay about filing. But TREC says local governments can implement its recommendations consistent with third letter or spirit. So following TREC's recommendations, a local government can establish a standing policy to petition for its own and public access. At a recent League of Women Voters event, which I was glad to see Mayor Vaughan and Dr. Wells attend, TREC co-chair and State Supreme Court Justice Earls was asked about a route to a local standing policy advocating for such access to police recordings. She said, "The current law gives elected officials at whatever level room to provide what you're asking," adding, "There is no legal barrier." Finally, if, if you, if somehow you're still hesitant after repeatedly going to the General Assembly to make police footage available to the public, it should help you to know that Mr. Osabi, the Attorney for Greensboro Police Officers Association, has stated that that group generally favors the release of all video as long as it's fully disclosed to the public and it's not taken out of context, edited, or anything like that. So it sounds like there's a lot of support for government transparency on this issue of allowing police recording to be accessed, and you're in a position to put it in place.
Thank you. Paulette Montgomery, followed by Hester Petty, followed by Samuel Whitley, Jr.
You know, there has been a lot of conversation about systemic racism, and we need to dig deeper, not only in policing, but in other areas when it comes to health care and education and housing. It is across, it is across the board. We need to do better. And I recognize that. We do need to do better. And we, as a community, I think that we have the ability to do that. We've seen it. And so I am proud to be here today. I'm proud to be here, not as your mayor, but just as a person in this community that can stand here with you. So it is good to be here on Juneteenth to commemorate that event, but not only that, but how we can move forward, how we can move forward as one. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about systemic racism, and we need to dig deeper, not only in policing, but in other areas when it comes to health care and education and housing. It is across, it is across the board. We need to do better. And I recognize that. We do need to do better. And we, as a community, I think that we have the ability to do that. We've seen it. And so I am proud to be here today. I'm proud to be here, not as your mayor, but just as a person in this community that can stand here with you.
Mayor Vaughan, I'm Paulette Montgomery. You stated in this video from Juneteenth of 2020 that we need to dig deeper and we need to do better. Any idea when that may start? Do you have a timeline because it's only getting worse? In your press release, after the brutal murder of Tyree Nichols, you stated it is always the right time to stand against injustice. We work with officers each day to ensure a culture that embodies de-escalation, respect, and community values. We are committed to ensuring this type of egregious act does not happen in Greensboro. First, if you are so dedicated to injustice, then why are the officers that killed Marcus Smith still on the job? Second, that type of egregious act has already happened on your watch. Third, what kind of de-escalation are you talking about? The kind of de-escalation that Joseph Lopez got? Your officer sent a dog to attack a man with mental health issues, then gave him eight seconds to come out of the back of a storage building before he was shot in the face. Eight seconds, then shot in the face. The week before, our sheriff's department was able to de-escalate Joseph Lopez when he was having a mental health crisis. Do you think maybe we need to do some cross-training with them? You're now asking in the community to respect the same department that has had three former current officers charged for sexual abuses to women, one a minor. That was just the month of January. They stalk, profile, and terrorize our houseless community and beat and kill our black and brown citizens. Zara Jones and Duke Crenshaw are just two examples, and you're asking for respect. You can't be serious. This chart, which was taken from your website, may appear that incidents are going down, but it clearly shows a huge disparity of use of force against our black community. If you really want-
Your time is up. Hester Petty, followed by Samuel Whitley, Jr., followed by Malik Pay.
Good evening. My name is Hester Petty. In October 2021, I filed a public records request for all information about Greensboro Police Investigations of Hemp Stores in 2021. Over a year later, in December of last year, I finally received the information I asked for. I received eleven applications for search warrants and one arrest report. Three individuals were targeted, two with Middle Eastern surnames, one Latino surname. Tonight, I will summarize the information I received. In October 2020, a crime stopper's complaint alleged that marijuana was being sold as CBD from a warehouse in Elon and a hemp store in Greensboro. The allegations were investigated, and Officer DS Rakes applied for search warrants for the warehouse, three hemp stores, and the residence, residents of the owner of these businesses. No arrest was made as a result of these investigations. In August 2021, Officer Rakes received information from a concerned citizen that there was a new hemp store in downtown Greensboro. A police investigation began, and Officer Rakes applied for a search warrant of that store. One of the owners was arrested, charges later dropped. Also in September 2021, Officer Rakes again applied for search warrants for three hemp stores and one residence, based on information from Greensboro Police Officer Young, that marijuana was being sold and distributed from these businesses. Officer Young's information came from a confidential, reliable informant. No arrest resulted from the investigation. Many hours and expense went into these investigations, and the only arrest resulted in dropped charges. Businesses were disrupted, merchandise confiscated, all in an effort to target cannabis, a drug currently either decriminalized or legalized in thirty-one states. And according to Pew Research in 2021, ninety-one percent of Americans believe cannabis should be legalized to some degree, with sixty percent in favor of legalization of both medical and recreational use. Given that the GPD suffers from a reduced workforce, is targeting hemp stores really a good use of its resources? And I would also like to point out that you gave a, a resolution tonight for the Shabazz, Mr. Shabazz, and that most of the people that came in wheelchairs were not allowed to come in downstairs. They had to go back around and come in a side door. That's pathetic.
City manager's gonna look into that.
Good afternoon. Respect the council and the women's and the men's. For all the women, I know it's a power in the house. Amen. My, my name is Ezra Samuel Whitley, Jr., and I am the founder and pastor of the Ma'adis Freewill Baptist Church located in the city of High Point, North Carolina. I come- I come to bring an issue before y'all about homeless. It's been promoted throughout Fox 8 and News 2 about this great need in the city of Greensboro. But I come to let this council know that you're being fooled. Old folks say you've been hoodwinked. They made a fool, they are making fools out of y'all with this homeless begging for money to take care of people that have, whoo, come up with ideals to trick the government and the city out of money and somewhere to stay for two or three weeks, or maybe four months. I'm in this situation because of sickness. The regional motel, the rooms that y'all are supplying are not given, the people that are given to it by RIC, they're not standing, the drug dealers got the rooms. The crack man take up $4,000 for us a third of the month. The people out there that's running the RIC can't get no answer on the telephone. I had to call Skip Austin to find out which way to go with this thing and to let y'all know that y'all been hoodwinked. It's a lie going on. If these people got $4 million, why ain't got nowhere to stay? Why we don't have houses? The site they got us in, the plumbing is running it back and forth in our room. I called for city inspector, but ain't nobody answered me yet. The people that own the property said they already been paid, they don't care, because they gonna throw us out in March anyhow. Four million on the city side, Skip Austin on them side is the county. I think it come by nine million. We should have had some houses built. I got to sit down. What is going on is the drug dealers and the thugs of the city of Greensboro have come together to beat y'all. This been going on since Open Door Ministry Housing Program called Rapid Rehousing, 2016, with me. Still ain't got nowhere to stay yet. They put you on a permanent housing list, they use us to get money from y'all so that the bums and the scum of Greensboro, they lay in the woods all summer and deal with all these pests and bugs and snakes and rats and raccoons, but then y'all will give them somewhere for three or four months to stay so they can continue to smoke crack? Keep us up? I done had a heart attack behind these people. I did not believe God put me here for a reason, but then he let me see this going on. He put me in this position to be homeless so I can come and tell y'all what's going on. It is a lie. Y'all are taking care of people that don't want to be taken care of. That's the way they want to live. But the... Can I say this? But the ones...
Thank you, sir.
But the ones that is rightfully being, is homeless because of they can't pay the bills because of poverty, those are the ones that need to help.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Amen.
Malik Pay, followed by Dell Stone, followed by Louis Medina.
How you doing? My name is Malik Pay. I actually run a company called Photography Plug. We've been very fortunate to... Yeah, my name is Malik Pay. I actually run a company called Photography Plug. We're very fortunate to have done a lot of millions of views. I haven't been back home in a long time. I actually noticed some divide with your pictures outside. You know, I noticed these black men outside, this advertised as your advertisement, but I didn't see George Floyd or Tyree Nichols. I've been out at the Civil Rights Museum trying to start a block of love, something that I don't think our country has. But the message is not just for you guys, but the message is to Joe Biden also, that the black man is furious, that you talked to Tyree Nichols' family, but you didn't address the black man's fury in America. And my aunt happens to be Elma Adams. Maybe that's why I'm on this mission. I know we would never probably solve racism in this country. But when I went out to Skid Row and different places of homeless problems, I realized that we have to clean up Skid Row. And right across from the Civil Rights Museum is a person that's homeless, is somebody that needs all of us to make a real change for this country. Our message is to never have another Tyree Nichols in this country. How brutal that was, that beating, to divide us and say fifty-five thousand white U.S. Russian soldiers are dead. I'm a human. How many Ukrainian soldiers are dead? I'm a human. Thank you.
Dell Stone, followed by Louis Medina, followed by Billy Belcher.
Dell Stone with WO. So over the past month, three Greensboro Police Department employees have been charged with sexual assault. Three in a month. First, there was Officer Kenneth Adams, charged with sexual battery, assault on a female, and supplying alcohol to an underage person. Then we had Officer Joshua Oliver, charged with six counts of statutory sex offense and six counts of indecent liberties with a minor. Finally, Crime Analyst Matthew Hammond, charged with three felony counts of sexual exploitation of a minor. All of these cops have now been fired, but what is the city doing to prevent these abuses from happening in the first place? What is this government doing to change the fact that police, with all of their armed power, encounter citizens who are vulnerable, who are poor, who are victims, traumatized, in need of help, perceived as suspicious? These are the people who are subjected to the power and coercive authority that is granted to the police. And these encounters often happen at night, in the dark, in places with little public visibility, that give officers ample opportunity to take advantage of people, and cops do. They take advantage of their power, their badge, their gun, their connection to the force to commit sexual abuse and assault. What does this say about police culture that this problem is so systemic? It says policing enables this kind of abuse by its very nature. When we have cops harassing houseless people and private cops like the Block by Block ambassadors pretending they're providing hospitality by going around and calling houseless people undesirables, we know that policing is rotten at its core. We know the city council is not going to abolish police. They lick the boots cops walk in. We know they're not even going to defund the police, because council members get fat donations and social favors from the wealthy business owners who want these cops pushing poor people away from their tourist attractions. This council will lie to our face and say that they care about the safety of our community, but they won't even do the low-hanging fruit that other cities actually have, like getting policed out of traffic stops. Mayor Vaughan said in a statement on the murder of Tyree Nichols that the city government works to ensure a culture that embodies de-escalation, respect, and community values. The same city that has seen three cops charged with sexual abuse in a single month? Notably, she has no statement on that. This council's not serious. It's not serious about addressing police brutality, and it's not serious about serving those it nominally represents. We would do well to remember that only us, only the people, only the community who is not sanctioned by the state can represent ourselves. To remember, police are not superheroes or some special category of person. They're no better than the rest of us. They're just often deluded, they're drawn to power, and in a society that prioritizes property over human life, that power will inevitably be abused.
Louis Medina, followed by Billy Belcher, followed by Toad.
Hello, my name's Louis Medina. I'm with WO, Working Class and Houseless Organizing Alliance. Today, I'm here because of the brutal murder of Tyree Nichols. It was Joseph Lopez before that. Before that, it was Duke Crenshaw, George Floyd, Marcus Smith, and so on and so forth. We gotta start talking about solutions. It's unfortunate that we have to keep having this conversation about solutions. What have we tried? What isn't working? What are we doing that's not working? Well, here's a popular slogan: "Defund the police." So let's inspect that. During the uprising of 2020, people all over the country took to the streets to protest police brutality, and they were met with more police brutality. Following the end of the protests, governments in every major city, including this one, have funneled more, not less, to police departments. Some of us might think they didn't hear us. Maybe they didn't, maybe we weren't shouting loud enough, but I tend to think they did, and they've given us our answer. The short answer? No. The long answer? Based on all this extra funding and all these toys you give these police, they're willing to kill every last one of us before they give an ounce of their power. That's a big one. Clearly, defunding the police isn't gonna work. Well, let's think about this slogan: "Abolish the police." Right? That's something I'm for. But first, we have to, when we talk about abolishing the police, we have to figure out who we're talking to. Are we talking to these politicians, these puppets that clearly won't even defund the police? That's laughable. No, abolish the police can only be understood as a coherent demand if we're demanding it out of ourselves. We must be talking to each other. That's a scary thought. I'm gonna, unfortunately, sometimes you have to say the unsayable. You know, can I help but wonder, what if Tyree could have done what the police does and call for backup? What if at every traffic stop, it was the policeman that was afraid to make it home at night? What if it was the policeman with his hands up, pleading, begging, "Don't shoot"? I wonder. You know, I wonder what type of situation it'd be like. Someone said racism will never go away, probably not in our lifetime. I believe it will, right? And I think that the real problem isn't that people have racist attitudes, it's that they have a gun, right? And they're able to express it against us. So I think that if the police were to fear us the way we feared their cruelty, well, they would stop, because we would have made them stop. And that's the only thing that abolish the police could possibly mean. Thank you.
I'm Billy Belcher. I'm from WO, the Working Class and Houseless Organizing Alliance. I want to start by delivering a message for somebody who cannot be here tonight. Mary Smith saw the city's statement over the death of Tyree Nichols in Memphis. The weekend before last would have been Marcus Smith's forty-third birthday, and just then you decided to try to sound self-righteous, even though your police killed Marcus. And it's painful. It's painful to denounce violence when it happens over there and then overlook it or excuse it or cover it up when it happens right here. It hurts, thank you. It hurts the victims of your violence to hear you show concern when it happens to somebody else. Do you understand that? Because Mary Smith wanted to make damn sure that you understood that. You are hypocrites. Congratulations on hurting that family again. I hope you're all proud. Cue when we show you contempt on the sidewalk, brother. This is why. Now, I want to talk about another death at the hands of the Greensboro Police. Last August, nearly six months ago, an unarmed, black, seventeen-year-old kid, Duke Crenshaw, was shot and killed by a Greensboro police officer. It has been six months, and y'all are still hiding the name of the killer. You are still hiding the footage of the killing, and that is not acceptable. That is not accountability, and that is not honesty. That is how corruption works. In an actually functional democracy, that would not even have been possible. Everyone in this room knows that the police lie about use of force as a matter of routine. You act like you care what happened to Tyree Nichols, but what you're doing to Duke's family and to this community is evil. You want to show people that you care, you can start by telling the truth. Who killed Duke? The department should have told us that already, but they won't. So you're gonna have to make them. That is your job. Do it. Petition to have the footage released and tell us the truth about what happened to that child and who did it and why. Get the information. Tell us. Who killed Duke? Tammy, I live in your district. You gonna find out for me?
Who killed Duke?
Who killed Duke? Who killed Duke? Who killed Duke? You, you gonna find out for me? You want to be my buddy? Can you get the question answered for us, friend?
Toad, followed by Wayne Durham, followed by James Rosa Jr.
Colin, BJ, Chris, I mean, top-notch. Cookies, they're all great people. They work well with the homeless. The only criticism I'd have is when you guys expanded the map at the request of businesses, because honestly, you're cleaning up roads that don't even have businesses on them. Well, the ambassadors are, not you. But anyways, I mean, like, Mary Kay, you worked on equality boards with my friend Fawn. She extols your virtues. I'd like to see more of that from you. Nancy, you worked on racial equity boards with my mom. She extols your virtues. I laughed in her face, because you obviously don't know what equity means if you're going to keep this assault on the homeless. Long-term solutions, it's not hard. Right now, you've got the palaces, which were essentially a one-bid contract with the IRC. Who used to run the IRC? Yeah, we all know, Kennedy. Now it's her minion Cameron. IRC was the only one that made a bid. I heard from tiny houses that they declined. Other charities came up to me, a homeless person, and said, "We didn't even know that we could bid." So it looks really fishy. Look for the long-term solution. Seriously, propose that kind of money. Do something right for a change.
Wayne Durham, followed by James Rosa Jr., followed by Jeanette Davidson-Mayer, and those are the only people I have signed up to speak.
Hey, I'm Wayne Durham. I'm president of the Greensboro Police Citizens Academy Alumni Association. It's a group of people that are made up from those that graduated from the Greensboro Police Citizens Academy. Mary Kay Alvez is there. I have a group of people here and some others that are gonna speak. We want to make sure that you understand that we're going back through this so that we can learn more about the Greensboro Police and spread that community in a positive light, as well as to do community engagement, because that's what this is all about, is community engagement in the community. I have a story. Every time I have a meeting with the Greensboro Police Citizens Academy Alumni Association, I start off with a positive story about Greensboro Police. This is one of my favorite stories, and this is Officer Byrd. Officer Byrd was nominated and out of D4 for Officer of the Month. Officer Boyd responded to a disorder trespasser on 9/22/2022 where a young couple and their one-year-old daughter were trespassed to a house that had been visiting while attempting to find residents in Greensboro. Officer Byrd reached out to try to find a community shelter that would take the family in, and no one, any of the shelters was available for the family. She exhausted all means available to her and truly had no place to go. The family had an apartment they were scheduled to rent in a couple of weeks. Officer Byrd took it upon herself to find a hotel for the family, transport them to the hotel, and paid for the room for three nights of her own money. Officer Byrd followed proper procedure to get the family to the hotel. Officer Byrd reached out to several local agencies and followed up with them during her time off, which began the next day. She was also able to partner with community, Office of Community Engagement, and as well... She was also able to partner with community, Office of Community Engagement, and as well Behavioral Health Resource Team, who assisted to help making contact with several community groups to get assistance for the family. Officer Byrd continued to keep in contact with the family, even went in person to speak with the community partners to help get assistance for the family. Through her hard work and determination, she was able to get their temporary housing secured until they could move into their apartment. Officer Byrd was also assisted, also assisted the family in getting additional support and secure housing so that they would be able to thrive in their new community. Her tenacity and care allowed this young family to find peace in a trying, timely family, even referred to her as an angel. They had no idea what they would have done without her, it would have been unimaginable. So, thank you very much. James Rosa.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is James Rosa, Jr. I am the Vice President of the Citizens Police Academy Alumni. This is, I don't want to get emotional about it, but yes, there's still a lot of work to be done with the police department. And as the Citizens Academy, we have learned, going to the academy, we have learned things about the police department. At one point, I felt like some people did, that I didn't trust the police, and I didn't believe in the police. And today, I say that I do. I do trust some police officers, okay? There are, again, there are some that need some work to be done with. I have friends that are police officers, and sitting down and speaking to them and finding out how they feel about things, you know? I always feel, who's gonna stick up for the good cops? You know, everybody's always talking about how bad the police department is, how about those that are doing good things, you know, like Officer Guy, Officer Members, Doug, they go out in the community and feed, feed the homeless, you know? Back in December 21st, at Home Depot on JJ Drive, they did a lot, you know, we gave our coats, we gave our food, we gave our toys. On January 21st, we did the same thing at the Extended State, Choice Extended State. They partnered with other organizations, nonprofit organizations, to give out things to the community. On, on January 28th, they came out to peeler for the grand opening and did the same thing. I mean, you know, I, I want to say thank you to those officers. I want to say thank you to the police officers that are really standing up and doing the right things for the community, and again, just thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeanette Davidson-Mayer. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. As of May of this year, I will be a three-year resident to North Carolina, moving here from Idaho. I lived on the, in rural part of Idaho, on the Oregon-Itoho border. Through the community relations I did through the National Guard, City Council, the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, and my former employer and current employer, I work with and have became friends with many law enforcement agencies back west, working on it here in the east now. I worked with two states, two county, three, three city agencies, as well as many officers through the state, Oregon State Snake River Correctional Institution. The combination of these four cities and two counties is a comparison in size to Greensboro, so that's the point I'm getting to. I have never lived in such a large city that I can now call home. Moving here during the pandemic was a challenge, especially when most of my job was either online or traveling. But when I started getting out, when the pandemic released, I did start being able to witness our officers helping stranded motorists on the side of the road and handing out teddy bears to the children in the vehicles. I am a very proud grandmother of a three-year-old active grandson, who is a huge firefighter fan, wears his firefighter costumes all the time, and every time we are out in public and a law enforcement agent officer sees him in his firefighter gear, it's age-appropriate professional banter, so much so that my grandson now has added police officer attire to his uniforms that he wears out proudly in public. I've witnessed at many different coffee shops where a lot of private citizens will buy our officers their coffee without their knowledge that it's been done. There's a fabulous little tiny dive bagel shop near my house where I have also witnessed officers having their meals bought without their knowledge. This to me shows that our community does have respect for our law enforcement and appreciates what they do. Now, there is not a single profession out there that's unfallible. We do have poor leadership and representation in every profession that is out there, and I just ask, what can we do to help support our good officers and keep giving them the tools and resources to become more efficient, more better, more better, very good English there, and less, and less of the negative that's going out there? They are out in the public, they are in the public eye and are held to higher standards. But I have seen many of our men and women in uniform here in Greensboro that have shown the true heart of what it means to protect and serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Booze-Water?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening. I'm a proud graduate of the Citizens Academy as well, and I just want to say that, and I'm sure you all know on the dais, but this group of alumni go above and beyond in our community, whether it's Operation Yuletide, whether it's Feeding the Homeless, or being, or being called last minute. We didn't meet much during the pandemic, but now that things are starting to roll again, I want to thank everybody, and there's Kate Sigmund, the city employee who helped supervise this group. So, last meeting, I walked in the room right on time, and there were probably thirty, forty people already there from the alumni, so I was thrilled, and I just want to thank each and every one of you, because I think you bring a good perspective on, on what really goes on behind the scenes with a lot of our officers who help people and don't even ask or expect the recognition. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to make two quick points, and one is about a program that I just heard of last week through Assistant City Manager Trey Davis and Chief Thompson. The city of Greensboro and Advanced Auto has entered into a partnership where Advanced Auto has given GPD 100 gift cards. So if they see a car that is having a safety issue, they're not pulling people over and writing citations, they're actually giving them gift cards to go get that car repaired so that they are safe and that people riding on the road with them are safe. I think that is a great program, and I do want to thank Advanced Auto, correct? Advanced Auto for that great partnership. I think it's something unique, and it's not something that we talk about, how other businesses partner with GPD to make this a safer environment. The other thing I want to talk about is there were a couple of comments about use of force. In, in 2022, there were 205,153 calls for service, less than one hundredth of those resulted in a use of force. And a use of force does not necessarily mean a violent encounter. It could be just touching somebody to move them out of the way or to take them out of the street. That our police officers have to self-report every time there is something that could be considered a, a physical altercation. The, what I had just said accounts for over sixty-seven percent of the reports for use of force, and basically, a, when you're talking about, you know, touching somebody, it is physical use of body contact physically to move somebody or the movement of a person. And so it can range for something like a soft hand response, like I just touched Mrs. Booze-Water. So while we hear an awful lot about, you know, you would think it is a police department gone crazy, but when you look at the actual statistics, it is a minor, minor part where use of force is involved, and then you really have to understand the definition of use of force. In 2022, there were seven reported incidents where a firearm was used, just seven out of 205,153. I would encourage people who are watching the city council meeting, the people were up talking about the police academy. I would encourage people, especially people who are concerned about the police and their behavior, to sign up for the police academy and to see a fraction of what it's like to be a police officer, especially today. That's all I have to say. So, if there are no other comments, we can move on to our consent agenda. We do have items G1 through G13. Is there a motion?
I'd like to pull one.
And is that to vote no or to talk about it?
Well, I don't know if we can talk about, but I had a question about G8 on the Downtown Historic Register.
If it is a brief question and can be answered, then...
Why wouldn't Magnolia House included on the Downtown Historic Register, the expansion? There's a long list, I actually looked through all 150 pages, and it said ironically that there were photos, which I didn't see any photos on it, but if we're gonna increase it, and there was a big discussion over architecture, commerce, ethnic heritage, social history, and civil rights as part of the adding of the Downtown Historic Register, then why wouldn't Magnolia House be considered?
All right, I'm Mike Calhig with, with the Planning Department, and the Magnolia House is what the, what the architectural historian who prepared the nomination would, would say is that it's too far physically from the district to be included, and there are some very strict rules that the National Park Service has about the geometry of the district and the, there has to be physical relationship and connectivity, and I think that's probably the reason.
So, Goldie, you can probably say this better than I. So, Madam Mayor, we might need to pull it, because my thought process is, the only reason that the Magnolia House is not contiguous with downtown is, how do you call Moro Boulevard? A white flight street or something to that effect, where you basically built that street to block East Greensboro from downtown, and then it's stubbed? And that's the only reason Magnolia House should be considered.
So, I don't think this is a time-sensitive item, so why don't we remove it and put it, yes, so what item number is that? G8. Any other? So can I have a motion to minus G8? So that is moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mr. Holston, minus G8. Council, please vote. Dr. Wells, did you? It was about how come the Magnolia House wasn't included in this item, and I would ask the city manager to make sure that we have an email regarding why it was not in this item.
Question that I will have had for Mike is, I think there's a time sensitivity to this particular item, and I'm, that's the question I will have asked Mike, but we will look into it, but I also think that the criteria, I recall very well, for designating an area Historic District on the National Register may be totally different, and that's why, but we will look into it. However, I do believe that there may be some time sensitivity to this particular item.
Well, we've already pulled it for the next meeting.
We need to ask for stuff about this, because doing those National Register, when you do the applications, they try to get them in, and I know, because we're doing that at my house, and so there's certain areas that they have, and I suppose we wouldn't consider that downtown. Now, what you're talking about on East Market, they wanted to name, rename a portion of, of East Market downtown east. That was just going to be, just like we did Midtown, and it was only assigned.
Well, no ma'am, what, when I, you know, I communicate with, you know, Ms. Pass Miller often, and she requested to, to be considered for the Historic Register, I would tell you that there's a couple of things. One, if it's that time-sensitive, we shouldn't have one meeting in which to discuss it. If it's that time-sensitive, we should, council should have at least two meetings to have a debate and discussion over what it is. So this should have been brought to us in January, period. Second of all, you know, I know that you threw out one meeting, I believe, to really talk to folks. I couldn't make that meeting, and I know I never got called to discuss it, and so this is the only opportunity I've been able to discuss this item. And third, why not, did the city staff ask the question enough in which to approach the increase in geographic region of the National Register so that it could potentially be in the National Register based on how the Magnolia House ended up where it is? Because when you look through those 150 pages, it is linear, it's Elm Street, it's Davie, it's Lewis, it's Washington Street. I literally looked through all 150 pages. Did we do enough, or do we just accept the first response of, well, no, it's too far out of the way, let's, don't worry about it? So, there's not just one question I have about the item, there's actually four. Now, if y'all want to go ahead and pass it, just because we gotta slam it through?
I, I, we, we voted to...
Could I say one thing about the Magnolia House? I believe it is in the South Greensboro National Register Historic District. I'd have to check the map, but I do believe it is already in a National Register Historic District. Not absolutely certain of that.
And she can, she can ask, apply for historic designation of the property, you know, of just the property itself, too.
Let's, Mrs. Thurms and Dr. Wells?
If there's time, if there's time sensitivity on this issue, is, does passing this preclude us having another vote on another item to add Magnolia House at the next meeting, if it should qualify or be requested?
Well, first of all, the, the National Park Service actually makes the decision about National Register listing, and the, there is a process for obtaining public input, and this is part of that process, and we've held a meeting at the Historic, at the History Museum, and we held a meeting at the Historic Preservation Commission to get information out there, and we send out, well, the state Historic Preservation Office actually sent out a notification to property owners, and the, there is also a process for listing properties individually, and I, we're also looking at the Bimbo Road, South Bimbo Road area as a potential National Register Historic District, but the National Register Advisory Committee is meeting on Thursday to consider whether or not to submit the National Register nomination update for downtown Greensboro onto the National Park Service for, for listing, and they are asking for your support or, and any comments you may have, so...
Mr. Calhig, when did this process begin?
I'm sorry?
When did this process begin?
Let's see, the process for updating the Downtown National Register Historic District began in 2018, and it began with an architectural survey of the Downtown District and the surrounding area to see if there were other buildings that might be eligible for the register, and we did that at the request of citizens, especially developers, who wanted a, a better document, the one that's done, that was done in 1982 is very out of date and difficult to use. The one that's done, that was done in 1982 is very out of date and difficult to use.
So this started in 2018?
Correct.
And how many times have we met about it? Zero. So my point is, this started five years ago, but we have to vote on it right now because we're going to meet on Thursday. Goldie, it's process. If this started that long ago, why should we, if we have questions about something, why should we be asked to vote on it the Tuesday before a Thursday meeting?
Was this not decided in our, the commission? They discuss whether to...
Yeah.
This, they're asking us just for a letter of support. But the decision about whether going up, doesn't that, never the discussion took place?
And it's not a local decision, it's up to the National Park Service.
To grant it.
Yeah.
And is it just for downtown? Because I don't want Bimbo Park to be affected by any of this shenanigans.
It would not be affected by...
It wasn't discussed by our preservation commission.
So let me just, staff is saying that it's already on the national historic registry.
It's on it. This is just a read.
And it's on the South Greensboro National Registry?
Yes. And the process, again, like I said, is different. Mike can confirm, but I believe in January, there was a public hearing, and there was another meeting, I believe, January 19th and then the 25th.
That's correct.
Yes. And the invitation, if I recall, at least I received the invitation on behalf of the city to participate in those meetings back in December.
Right.
As well as the county also received that. So those meetings did take place. But it is just like a rezoning case where council doesn't have to hear it twice. It comes to you after another body has had.
Well, I guess for right now, especially since we seem to be beating this to death, is it on the national historic registry already?
Yes, already there. This is for a nomination to update. The district is already there, they just need it updated.
The downtown is on the national register of historic places, and it makes property owners eligible for historic rehabilitation tax credits. And many developers and property owners have used those tax credit to rehabilitate their buildings. So it's been, it's had a real economic impact in Greensboro.
I do know that one of the issues we have downtown is annexing properties into downtown if it's not contiguous. And I know Mr. Matheny is working on that, where it would, if Magnolia House wished to be part of downtown, and I think she does. But right now, we don't have a process unless we annex the properties in between the border and the Magnolia House.
And we did contact Downtown Greensboro Incorporated and asked them to help us get the word out, and they were, did that for us. So we also, back in 2018, there were notifications sent out to all property owners about the project beginning. So, you know, we've tried hard to make sure people are aware of this.
I move that we, I move that we would approve G8, because this is just asking for our approval, a recommendation to be...
It's only a recommendation. If you have any concerns, we'll share those with the National Register Advisory Committee.
So it's been moved by Dr. Wells, seconded by Mr. Holston, to put G8 back on and vote for it?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman, did you have a comment before we vote? Okay. So counsel, please vote.
We're putting it back on? Yes. I'm sorry, I'm watching, I'm watching the school board meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to vote yes, and it won't let me. Yeah, okay. So that passes seven to one. I do think it is worth follow-up to the questions that Zach brought up. We'll now move on to the, there are no public hearing items. We'll move on to business agenda. Item I point one is a resolution to reaffirm city council action for fund balance improvement plan.
Move the item.
Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Ms. Abuziater. So I just want to make an observation, and Mr. Larry Davis, not to be confused with Mr. Trey Davis, please let me know if I'm wrong, but by passing the tax increase that was passed by council last time, we made that fund balance bigger. So we actually have to put more in now because of the increase in the fund balance. Do you have any idea what that costs us?
No, we actually are working, both budget and finance, are working on a mid-year projection update for you that will be coming to you via memos before the week is out, and it will get into more of those details.
So the increase in property tax, since there was such a large increase in property tax, what is that delta? How much more, I guess the question is, how much more difficult are we making that to achieve because it's based on the 25%?
It's certainly challenging because of the new calculation that we have to, you know, we're dealing with. We think, we believe, and which is why we've asked you to reaffirm the plan that you adopted a year ago, that the additional 1.25 cents that went into the debt service fund, in addition to the revaluation aspect of that, we did not go back to revenue neutral for that particular amount. So the entire value of that went into the debt service fund. We believe somewhere between five and seven years out, we can get to that 25% goal. We can immerse you in details, and we will in some upcoming memos, but that's the long-term goal right now, somewhere between five to seven years.
So my question is, what impact did the vote to raise property taxes, since it wasn't revenue neutral, and we saw more money? How did that impact the amount that we felt we owed? Last year, we knew that we had X amount of million that we had to make up. How much is it now? And you don't have to answer me now, but, but the assumption is that it's a lot more...
Correct.
Since we probably saw 45 million in extra money due to that tax increase.
Right. Because the calculation is now based on expenditures, that, as long as that number grows, however fast it's running, we have to run faster.
So we will likely see next year that it looks like the percentage of fund balance came down.
That's absolutely correct.
And I think that has to be taken into consideration when we're looking at raising taxes, all the unintended consequences. And I just wanted to point that one out.
Very good. Thank you.
Item I point two is a resolution to request chronic violators legislation modification of the North Carolina General Statute 160A-200.1.
Madam Mayor, I'd love for the manager or have Latoya to come up and explain the difference on this, just looking at it. I just want to make sure it's crystal clear. Because in here, I'm looking at the current statute and what we're asking for.
Counselman, would you be so kind as to just repeat the question for me?
Can you?
We can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Counselman, would you be so kind as to repeat the question?
Sure. The question is, what are you recommending on this item versus what is currently in the state legislation?
Right. And so the current statute states that the term of enforcement is a rolling 12-month, I'm sorry, it's actually a calendar year. And we are asking for the term to now be a 12-month period in which to be able to enforce the nuisance provision, which would basically make for a more efficient means by which to enforce this statute.
Okay, that was moved by Mrs. Hightower and seconded by Mr. Holston. Looks like we ever, looks like somebody is requesting to speak. Hold on. Nobody on this item? Okay, counsel, please vote.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question to the manager?
Can I stop you?
Yeah, sure.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
So we're sitting here voting on our legislative agenda, which of course is a unique way we're doing it this year. But we usually do this in tandem with the economic development arm of our partners, the chamber. So that way, we have one agenda versus two. I need to, I'd like for you to explain to us why we have two. And I saw the dates, which again, talking about processes, we do have time. I know the chamber meets tomorrow, but in my opinion, if we put forth this legislative agenda, we're literally showing the state of North Carolina that we're going to have two different agendas, therefore we are working in silos, municipal government in one silo, business community in another silo, which is the antithesis of what we all talk about.
If you want me to respond to that, I don't know how it has been done in the city of Greensboro, but I do know as a municipality, you do have a responsibility, at least if you choose to, to submit your own legislative items because we're a different entity from the chamber. I don't, because the chamber could decide to submit two items, and they could just be totally unrelated to what the city has. The city in this case is submitting about seven different items. I haven't seen the chamber's request. My understanding is that it's about two or three. So, but I also believe that because their own goals and purposes are not necessarily the same as ours, there will be most likely economic development driven, which is what we support. But I do know we've been having conversations between us and them in terms of making sure that even if ours are not carried by theirs, there's a support, mutual support between the two. But I would say that as a city of Greensboro, you do have a responsibility to submit your own, independent of any other entity. But what I'm hearing is that so that we're not competing with each other if there are two different items. I don't believe that there are.
Yeah, I mean, we traditionally, maybe y'all have done a lot of things different.
We haven't, we haven't combined, as long as I've been sitting on council, we haven't combined our agendas. We've had our own agenda.
And then I think we endorse their agenda separately.
We endorse their agenda, and I think they typically endorse our agenda, but we have not done a combined agenda as long as I've been on council, that I can recall.
So let me just make one observation. Senator Michael Garrett is the chair for the Guilford delegation, and he has requested a meeting with council on February 20th to go over our legislative agenda. So it is time-sensitive at this point, and the legislature has moved up the filing dates. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, which I think is why it's on tonight's agenda. The city clerk is trying to arrange that.
Councilmember Matheny, I am in contact with Senator Garrett's aide, and we are working that out. When I polled council at the strategy session last week, I asked everyone if they could hold from nine to one on the 20th because we will be somewhere in that timeframe, but it has not been solidified at this moment. But we are in communication and trying to get that solid.
So we do have a motion and a second on item I point two.
I think we already voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, we passed at eight to zero. Now we are on eight point three. Resolution to request conditional rental inspections program legislation modification.
Move the item.
Of North Carolina General Statute 160D-12.1207, periodic inspections. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Ms. Abuziater. And that passes seven to one. I point four is a resolution to request additional funding to the state housing fund. Second, moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Counsel, please vote.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, we've got funding that we've allocated since 2016 in conjunction with the community foundation that totals almost $100 million. Yet we've had buildings that are sitting empty like John Demery Way. If we were to get the state to increase the state housing fund, what ideas would we have in which to use those funds to properly house people in the city of Greensboro? Or are we just saying arbitrarily, y'all increase the fund whether or not we get any or not?
I have Michelle respond to that, but I would say generally, you can never have enough funding for affordable housing. And so this will just be an opportunity to do more, maybe do better what we're doing, unless we have specific projects in mind.
Yeah, I think the notion around funding the housing fund at the state level really has to do with issues that are present across the state. So it is something that, as we discussed, both the metro mayors and local jurisdictions have taken on. Because ultimately, if it were funded at that amount, there's no way for us to know how much of that allocation would ultimately come to us. We haven't earmarked anything specifically for that, but I am glad that you asked about John Demery. We actually just completed the physical needs assessment allocation portion. We are currently having the physical needs assessment completed, and we'll be rehabbing that property this spring. We've had conversations with both Dr. Wells and Councilwoman Hightower related to that. And I would absolutely like to see us doing more rehab projects. John Demery will be our first rehab project since Nettie Code. And it's something that we've, we haven't put a lot of focus on over the last decade or so, and we really need to, particularly given building costs and how difficult it is to bring something from the ground up. So we're really looking at rehab projects across the board. So I would say certainly if the housing trust fund is expanded and new opportunities are made available to us, rehab is certainly a part of that.
Like acquisition and rehab?
Yes.
Mr. Manager, from a process standpoint, how do you vision this legislation, legislative agenda moving forward at the state? We have a meeting potentially the 20th between nine and one o'clock. How do you see, like, what happens? Do we go in lobby? Do you go in lobby? Does Michelle go in lobby? Do we just count on McGuire Woods, her partners? What is the process you see setting forward since you're new?
So this is the first time we're going to have an intergovernmental relations manager, and the purpose of that is to make sure that communication is aligned. That's typically, it doesn't stop council members from leveraging your relationships with our legislators. You definitely can do that. But there's an advantage in having one person who can definitely make sure that information is shared, communication is consistent, and that the agenda discussions are the same. So the advantage we also have in having a lobbyist is that you get to have consistent talking points. And I think that that's very important, so that one council member, when you're talking to somebody, you're not saying something that's different from another. So we're going to be developing those for you, but we need you in talking to your, you know, to elected officials at the state level. This is where you really can be very much of a strong advocate for all these agenda items. But having said so, Michelle will provide us information, our director Cockburn will provide us, and these are going to become fact sheets that we will give to you that our lobbyists will also have. So it's really working in tandem, but we have an arrowhead in our governmental relations person who will make sure that we're sharing the same set of information. We know what's going on at every level so that we're not talking against each other.
So do we still do the downtown day with the chamber?
The downtown what?
Excuse me, that's something, I'm sorry. That's lives crossing. The Greensboro Day, where we go have the...
They haven't done it in several years.
Really? So we don't go down in tandem with them?
Well, it was COVID. It was, yeah.
You don't go to what now?
We broke up into teams and went and met with all our legislators to try to get things accomplished together.
Yeah, now the league, the league is having a state and town... Yeah, now the league, the league is having a state and town dinner on February 23rd.
So, you know, I know that this will be the first year that we have our intergovernmental relations person, but also I know that Mrs. Hightower and Mrs. Johnson, they're both active in the league, and that those are discussions, Zach is with, you know, the downtown Greensboro Association, we're with metro mayors. I think most of these organizations walk the halls. I know that metro mayors walk the halls pretty regularly. So, you know, I'm glad that we have an intergovernmental affairs. Talking points will be nice, but certainly, we are used to lobbying at our legislature. And I know that everybody on council has relationships, especially with our delegation.
And that's absolutely important, so we encourage you to do that. But while you're walking the halls, if we will know about it, we may provide support. I would say we take the same template to the federal level too. If you're going to DC and you're going to talk to our federal elected officials, just let us know. The lobbyists will be there. They can actually, part of their responsibilities is to set up dates if you want to go. But if you choose to go on, it will be good for them to be there to provide support to you, but also our staff to be there with you. I think at the end of the day, we want to make sure you use your relationships as best as you can, and we provide the support to make sure we bring in taxpayer dollars home. I think that's the most important thing.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Okay, that passes seven to one. Madam Clerk, are the vote totals showing? I know that I had asked that we would get the vote totals, because I'm frequently asked how that vote broke down.
I have been in communication with our GTN team tonight, because there seems to be some miscommunication about making that work. So I have actually sent Carlos, that's the manager of GTN, a message and asked if we can meet to discuss that tomorrow, because there seems to be a problem. I tried to switch over at one point, and it wasn't displaying, so I've asked for a meeting with him tomorrow.
Okay, yes, so the message is we need to do it. So, that passes seven to one with Mr. Matheny voting no. Also, you know, one thing that Zach brought up was that we needed to come up with some more financial asks. And while we've asked for more money for the state housing fund, I know that Mrs. Hightower and I have, and other people have asked about, Zach, what you just said, how we can make sure that we get some of that funding. So I think you're going to see an additional resolution where we outline what we would do with that. And what we've been talking about is making things quantifiable and countable, saying that we need funding to help put, let's say, 200 people into housing in the next nine to 12 months, and what we could do with that funding. So I do believe you will see an additional resolution asking for more money, but with specifics on what that matrix looks like. Item I four is a resolution to request additional, that was it, sorry. Item I five is a resolution to request disposition of unclaimed firearms legislation modification of North Carolina general statute 15 dash 11 point two.
And I seconded.
You better jump on. Watch your screen.
So, moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mrs. Thurm.
Not me?
I'm sorry, moved by Ms. Abuzweider, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. We are going to need another session on how to use this.
I hate it. I don't like it.
It's not working. It's not working today.
It doesn't. I don't like it.
So that passes eight to zero. But I know that it's, I know that council members are frustrated, because some people are pushing the buttons to move, and other people are saying, move the item. So we do need to make that smoother.
You gotta say it and push the button. Right.
Item I six is a resolution to request speed limit and camera enforcement in school zone legislation.
Move the item.
Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Hightower.
I see, I hit, I hit the line, but it flashed back.
I can't.
In your legal opinion, is this even something the state legislation can do?
Oh, sure.
Oh, sure?
We took, we took out the...
The state legislator is all powerful.
We took out the portion that Mr. Baker brought up that he thought was a constitutional issue.
Right.
So it was streamlined, so it would just be legislative. So that passes seven to one with Mr. Matheny voting no. Item I point seven is a resolution to request Bingham Park site remediation funding in the amount of 32 million.
Move the item.
Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston.
And so, let me say, well, I assume everybody read the rationale and the reason why we need the money for Bingham Park remediation. This is a park the city has owned for years and years, and it is now, it's in the heart of a black community that is closed, but it is contaminated, and it is not usable until we remediate it. And it's going to cost us $39 million to fully remediate it, totally taking out the contamination, replacing it with clean dirt, in order to have trees, park benches, basketball courts, people walking through. And so it's essentially been closed since 2015, Chris, what, 2015, something like that? It's been a long time. It's been a long time, yeah.
I was the actual inspector that found the crack in the court that led to the discovery, so it's been a while.
Yeah, so that's why we are asking the state for this money. We're also going to ask our federal legislators for this money as well. We know there's Brownfield money at the federal. I've talked to briefly to Secretary Regan. And so I know there's money there. We need to get our lobbyists to find us this money, to remediate this park. And then we just got some good news on the other area, so we're going to need to make sure that we uplift this community that's very deserving and has been underserved for years. So, thank you for the support.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to support Mrs. Hightower's comments. Anytime we are at a meeting in East Greensboro, the question is always asked, what about Eastside Park? So I do believe this is something very, very important that I'm hoping our legislators will listen to.
And Madam Mayor, if I could say, I also want to commend Councilmember Hightower for her persistence and commitment. You know, the Councilmember Matheny mentioned that we should be more aspirational in our request, and I entirely agree. But we also need to be the kind of pit bull that the Councilmember Hightower is on this issue. You know, going from the amounts of monies that were first budgeted, but then not looking for enough monies to finish the job, not just start it, but to finish the job is very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that passes eight to zero. This is the end of our printed agenda. Don't believe there are any additions. Boards and commissions appointments, Mrs. Hightower? None tonight. Dr. Wells? Mr. Matheny?
I'd like to make a motion to add to the legislative agenda. I'd like to move that we request $10 million for urban investment and remediation for land in the center city. And I, by the way, also want to commend Sharon. Great job on bringing Bingham Park up. I think kids, although it's closed, I think kids are over there playing anyway. And we've got to make more strategic. My argument on most of the legislative agenda is we're not asking for legislative items. We're asking and requesting for legislative modifications.
So I will second your motion.
Well, wait, but hang on. Is 10 million enough? Do we need more than that? Because, you know, it'll go there, it'll get cut, so maybe you ask for the 20, you ask for 30. Aspirational, outside the box, big thinking.
We can go for 20. I just sent the manager a message. I want to be in DC meeting our legislators, and I'd love to meet Mr. Regan in March, and I'd love for anybody to go. So 20 would be great.
So can you restate that?
I make a motion that we allocate $20 million for urban center city investment and remediation.
You have a second on that?
I'm sorry to clarify, you're not asking us to make an allocation, you're asking us to request an allocation. Is that correct?
To add it to our legislative agenda.
Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to know what I was voting on.
Just to make sure, Mr. Matheny, we don't need a work session on this, and we don't need, we don't need emails on your desk or anything like that in order to...
I'll be happy to give y'all further emails.
You think this will work?
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so now let's get back to boards and commission appointments. Mr. Matheny? Mrs. Hoffman? Mrs. Thurm? Ms. Abuzweider? Yeah. Mr. Holston?
I have none tonight.
Okay. Council comments? Mrs. Hightower?
I don't know what's been going on lately. I feel like I've been in a vacuum. I will say this is the beginning of, February 1 was the beginning of Black History Month. I challenge everybody to go out and learn a new history, black history fact, besides Dr. Martin Luther King and Booker T. Washington, and Frederick Douglass, and W.E.B. Du Bois, and Fannie Lou Hamer, and Rosa Parks. You'll see them a lot, but learn something, something new. We all can benefit from that as well. It was good to be at the February 1 breakfast on this past Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM. Yes, I was there at 7:00 AM, and I have, I have proof. I have people that can prove it. I actually do exist at 7:00 AM in the morning. But it was very good to honor 63 years of the Cityans that were the beginning of the civil rights era, and thankfully to the A&amp;T Four, who, you know, were bold enough to do that. So I was very glad to be there with them. I want to say that I have another initiative that I have just added to our plate. I will talk to each and every one of the council members here tonight about it, but I might as well go ahead on and spill the beans. GCS tonight gave us Hampton School. I have been working on it for about a year and a half. The appraisal came in relatively low anyway, but they had no use for the property. The county had no use for the property. It sits in an area that's hit by the tornado five years come April 15th. And the community deserves better. Right now, they have a contaminated park, they have contaminated land, looking at a depressed area that has not been touched in five, almost five years. When I talk to staff, I must say Parks and Rec got really excited about it. We can create the East Greensboro Greenway through there from A&amp;T all the way over to Barbara Park. So there's going to be some things we will work with the community on proposing. Yeah, we've got some challenges, but then we've been redlined into contamination, and this is years, and that we have to correct these injustices. So the land we have, yeah, it's not good, but we are going to make it good. And this is really being done for the community. I had one lady say to me, this is the best news she's heard in a very long time, just to know that we at the city care enough to want to improve the area that she lives in. And since the kids in the area won't get a school back close to them, they'll only get the Peeler-Hampton site, this will also be something that we can even begin to collaborate with Boys and Girls Club on, certain other things on. So it is East Greensboro's time. So I'm very excited about that, and I appreciate staff's hard work.
It is, it is very exciting, and, you know, that's been sitting there for five years, and it's really pretty shameful. I'm grateful that GCS is partnering with us by giving it to the city. Hope they're giving it to the city, because there is demo costs involved. But, you know, the good thing about this site is that Hampton and Bingham are right there. So that really makes the request you made even more substantial. I think it will be great for the neighborhood. I don't think if that school was damaged sitting in other parts of the city, that it would have sat there for five years.
It would not have sat there for five years, no. And that's how the community feels, and we've got to show the community that we've got to stop making those differences. When something's wrong, we need to fix it right away, and so I think it was the right thing to do. And I will say GCS heard what we said. We sent them a letter, we talked to them, superintendent, school board members for the area, and tonight they unanimously gave it to us.
I know that you've been working hard with Betty Jenkins and Deana Hayes-Green, and it was really important to have their support.
Absolutely, and they were 100% on board, but I think it's going to start really a better collaboration for the community, because GCS has school, you know, they have students over in that area. You know, so that space, when we get it going, can really benefit their students as well. So it's a great community collaboration for the betterment of all, so thank you again, and I'm excited. I'm really excited.
Dr. Wells?
This is Black History Month. It's, Councilwoman Hightower said, and I guess I say congratulations, because she's been working on trying to get Hampton School. So we hope that that will materialize the way that she has in mind, because I know it's, it will be a task, but she keeps the, keeps the hope, maybe it will happen. We did go to the breakfast at A&amp;T the other morning, and then we went to see a filming of Loudmouth, which is a documentary of Reverend Al Shopter. And it was really interesting and gives you a different perspective on some of the things that people have thought about him and why he was doing what he was doing. But he started as an activist as a teenager, so I thought that was very interesting.
It really was fascinating, and I think anybody, I don't know where it's available, but it was, it was very fascinating, and it went by fast.
Yes, yes, and it almost caused you to do a paradigm shift in, you know, in thoughts about him. We had the Concerned Citizens meeting last Thursday night, and city manager spoke to our community, and I think it makes it so much better when they feel that they have a way that they can communicate with council and those who are in charge. And then there were others who were on the line, on the Zoom call and answered questions, so appreciate that. Last night I had the privilege of going to the Brian Serres at Tanger Center, and I heard Dr. Kizmikia, I think her name, Corbett, I probably said her first name wrong. But she's, she's the scientist that was the lead, led the team that came up with the vaccine, the Moderna vaccine. And so she told us that it took her, they had been working on that for six years, because they knew the pandemic would come at some time. They didn't know when, but they had been working on it for six years. It was very interesting to hear her talk about, coming from a little town in North Carolina, just being a good student and... and loving science and how it had led her to that place. And now she's a teacher at Harvard. So that was very interesting. And it's, Councilwoman Hightower's challenge is to learn something about Black History. I thought it was very nice that the GTA had the buses, had bus rides free on the day that it was Rosa Parks, I think it was her birthday, and, and you could ride the bus free that day. So I thought that was very nice of GTA. Hope everybody has a good week.
Zach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were a lot of comments earlier about police and, you know, I think, I guess I got sworn in in August. And, you know, you hear about it every meeting. And the police, or the conversation or the topics were, do you think the police fear us? And I would submit to you that there are a lot of women and men that when they pull a car over are fearful of what they may come upon. And, you know, I don't take that lightly. When we're talking about funding our police, funding our public safety, having gone through what I went through personally for a number of years and the people, the women and men that would show up at our door, the ones that, that, that took my wife out of our house, to sit here and say that, oh, everybody is bad and police is bad is just, I, I absolutely don't agree. I think we've got some wonderful men and women throughout our public safety that deserve the respect that they give us each and every day serving us. And, you know, you sit up here and, and you listen to a bunch of stuff and at some point you're just like, you know what? God, I wouldn't want their job. Man, I'm glad they want their job. And I saw Sergeant Douglas come up earlier. Sergeant Douglas I see a lot downtown. He's one of the nicest human beings I've ever met in my life. He's very calm, very respectful. I remember we had an episode of a gentleman that's unhoused, that's off his meds, a person that we see often. And so we were just sitting there talking and he was like, we got this, it's all good. And they were just working with this individual. And the patience that folks have is just incredible. And the thing about the, some of the folks that Chief Thompson has had, or maybe in the previous chief, have had to terminate their employment. It is very difficult to sit up here or there or anywhere in leadership, whether in municipal government or private government or private business, and make decisions, leadership decisions, that you fellows in the best interest of the entire organization. In our case, we're making it for really not only the city of Greensboro, but we make decisions really in a lot of cases for the betterment of the entire triad. Boom, Toyota, economic development, jobs, Publix, water and sewer, police, public safety. Chief Thompson and his predecessor had to make decisions to terminate and they did it appropriately, they did it with thought, and they did it with the betterment of the entire community. And that's a tough decision and I commend our new chief for his leadership. I commend him for appointing what I feel are very talented deputy police chiefs. And I just want them to know, in the city of Greensboro to know, that we're proud of our public safety officials, we're proud of our police department, we're proud of those women and men that are doing the hard work, we're proud of our fire, we're proud of Gifford County Emergency EMS. Like, their job is tough. And so I don't know if any of them are watching, but thank you.
Zach, just to follow up what you said, I did a ride along, this is over a year ago, and on our way back to MMOB to pick up my car, we were on Windover and a car went flying by us about 85 miles per hour and it had on, it had temporary tags on it. And the officer I was with said, I got to pull him over because it was, it was fast and it was a little reckless. And we went over to the side and the anxiety I felt as he walked up and knocked on the driver's side of the window, I remember thinking, you could not pay me enough to knock on that window. That officer who I rode with is now our police chief. Yes. And I was really just impressed by all of the ride alongs and communications that we have that I think, I think we have a good police force. Goldie at Loudmouth, when, was it Reverend Nelson Rivers who spoke at the end of, since Al Sharpton? So, so yeah, there was a reverend who spoke and he said, you know, we are not against police.
Right.
We are against evil dressed as police. And I think that you can say that about any profession. So I thought that was a very interesting thing that he said. But yeah, it was a, it was a good ride along. And I would encourage everyone, I know that many of us, I think probably all of us have done ride alongs.
I did one with fire and I got in it. I was having lunch at Lucky 32. I jumped in. They were like, come on, Mr. Matheny, we're getting the fire truck. My son looked at me and he's like, Dad, get in the fire truck. I jumped in the fire truck. We started zooming down Windover Avenue. I'm like, what in the hell am I thinking doing this? I don't want to, I'll let them do it. I'm retired from ride alongs. Thank you all very much.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Just a couple of things. I was at the Brian Series last night and what a, you know, a wonderful young woman who's, I mean, who's done so much for the world at this point. And she's from North Carolina, did her master's and her PhD at Chapel Hill. She's been working in science officially with the, not the National Institute of Health since she was 16 because she's did, did all these internships every summer. Just amazing. I commend the Civil Rights Museum and the Speaker Series that they have going for this month of February. Amazing group of people. We, Reverend Sharpton was supposed to be here last week, but, but will return. And we, we got to see the film and certainly hear a couple of other people. Andrew Young is going to be here tomorrow and then there are, you know, two other people in the series. So I commend them as having really outstanding people here this month. And then tomorrow we will dedicate our fourth cornerstone for the Greenway. It's a wonderful piece of art, a cinch that was designed by a Black artist, Radcliffe Bailey, who's just a fantastic artist, who's done really amazing work. We've, his work has been displayed at the Weatherspoon and his work is in the permanent collection at the Weatherspoon as well. So really looking forward to that and getting to meet him in person.
Thank you. Tammy?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I wanted to ask Assistant City Manager Trey Davis if he could speak to the police cars. There have been articles written lately about the status of police cars, et cetera. And if you could speak to how many are on order, what the situation was. I know they were backlogged for quite some time. If you could provide us some, some truth to that information.
Yes, ma'am. First, I want to say, give a big thanks to Marlene Druga who's been huge in helping, you know, we're very appreciative to council for, you know, allotting that for the police department and, and helping us enhance with tools for recruiting and retention. But due to things out of our control with the manufacturer of closing windows, working on different things that probably are impacting our whole country, it has really slowed down. But I can tell you a report I got today that of the 20 cars, you know, we did them in, in phases, nine of them have arrived. Seven of them should be arriving within the next few days. Of those nine that are, have arrived, and I'll say this, you know, that's a, a pretty lengthy process. We have to go out and use other vendors to, with the, the police equipment and that, you know, it takes some, some serious detail. But hopefully we'll have those nine and a few others up online around early March. Again, the, the plan is still to continue ordering 20 in each stage in the next two, in year two and then year three. I've talked with the police chief about how to deploy them. He is working with his staff to figure out how they deploy them that accommodates you all's requests and, and the manager's requests to help with recruiting and retention. So does that look like new officers coming in? Does that look like officers who've been here for some time? So I'm very happy and thank you for requesting that update and I'll provide a more detailed update as we move along.
Thank you very much. I had the privilege on Saturday to, with Councilwoman Amos Waiters and Mayor Vaughn to attend the firefighter awards ceremony. And Zach, as you spoke earlier of, and others have spoken about the amazing work that the police department does, it was very impressive to hear about the lifesaving awards, the fireman of the year awards, and just how above and beyond all our staff go every day. But it was, it was inspiring to hear the stories that were celebrated last Saturday. I also had the privilege today of attending the Manufacturing Industrial Council meeting at Matthews Trucks today. That was really, really interesting. It's a great group of manufacturers all located in our area. And I would encourage us to share the information with our constituents that may be in the manufacturing world. The program today was all about recruiting and recruiting, how to market yourself as a manufacturing company to hire in light of the challenges that some of our local businesses are having now that Publix and they hear about Boom and they hear about Toyota and these big, how, how can the smaller manufacturer compete with hiring staff? It was a very interesting program, but I would encourage all of us, if we know manufacturers in the area, that they may want to get involved with that group. It was very impressive. That's all I've got for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mary Kay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, many of us were at the February 1 breakfast. I thought that was very, very poignant, a lot of wonderful conversation going on and I really enjoyed the panel. I thought that was, was amazing, the people who were on the panel for that. Of course, many of us, I don't want to forget, were at the grand opening for the Loop, the Urban Loop that opened January 23rd. We were some of the first cars who went on the rest of the Loop and that was very exciting. Let's see, the firefighters' awards ceremony. And I do want to say the Police Foundation had last Friday the Employees of the Month. And that again shows how many people in the police department receive awards for lifesaves, things like that. We were in our retreat, so we were unable to attend. I do want to, kind of talking about what Zach was talking about, and, and I don't want to forget our GM 911 employees either because they are our first call we make when there is something going on. But I do want to commend the new police chief. Yes, there have been some issues, but he took care of them immediately. He did not wait, he did not hesitate, he took care of them immediately. And I, I have great faith and that's the way that this department is run and the way is going to continue to be run. You know, I, I do want to say that I want to encourage those in the audience who are watching to sign up for the Citizens Police Academy. I took it in 2012 and I guarantee you, you will come away with a lot of knowledge on how these officers, they leave their homes every morning and they want to return at night as well. So, you know, I think it would be beneficial for as many people to sign up for those. Perhaps we could get into doing two courses a year, but it is two hours, I think it's every week or every other week for several weeks and then you graduate. It's, it's just, I can't tell you how much you learn. You learn a lot about the law, you learn a lot about stopping cars, you learn a lot. In fact, we did the Little Police 101 where we, we learned that, you know, when an officer stops a car, he can't tell who's in the car. You can't see. You don't know if it's a tall person, a short person, you don't know anything until you are up on that car on that side. So a lot of that. I did also want to thank those on the MPO, TAC, Mrs. Thurm, the mayor, several people. The, after listening to residents in the community, I think everyone knows there was going to be a project on Benjamin Parkway and I want to thank NC DOT. After talking with the residents, this huge project is going to be delayed because it did not have things like sidewalks and amenities and bike lanes that are something that the city of Greensboro feels is very important now. So we approached NC DOT and they have agreed that we can take that one, it was called U 5852, that project, and those funds will be given to the I 6004, which is the Rock Creek Dairy Road area. So that is something really major that has been done because that is where the growth is right now. Will Benjamin Parkway need to be looked at in the future? Of course it will. But the, the MPO and the residents in the community felt that, you know, really Windover needs to be taken care of right there at that Green Valley intersection first. So, you know, that was a great way for the community. The last thing I'm going to talk about, and it may be up on the screen already, yes, is went to the walk today, the mayor referred to it earlier, Akuria Hinton and the Mothers Standing Against Gun Violence, several of them were there this evening at 4:30. The Families Against Senseless Killings and Community Advocates walked that whole neighborhood putting out flyers to see if they can get any tips. Crime Stoppers was there, of course, and the police department. After every walk that we've had like that, we have had major tips come in and they're hoping, this poor little girl was asleep in her bed. And I've heard everyone come forward and say, you know, this is just absolutely the most horrific thing. I've seen a picture of her and this poor child is going to have to live with that the rest of her life if she makes it. It's still life threatening. So she was asleep in her bed and the gunshots were going off and she got hit in the mouth. So, you know, something, if anybody knows anything, please, please call Crime Stoppers. 373-1000, 336-373-1000. You can remain anonymous. Thank you.
Thank you. Hugh?
Yes, a couple of things. Again, celebrating Black History Month and also enjoy the 63rd Annual over at A&amp;T. It was a great breakfast, it was a great message, and the choir was just so inspirational, just absolutely inspirational. I also want to mention, as mentioned by Mr. Rosa earlier, the grand reopening out at the Peeler Center. That was a great event, a great effort by our Parks and Rec group, partners with, partnered at that event with many vendors and also GPD. I also want to give a shout out to the Cone Mills Charitable Foundation who partnered with Build Greensboro Together in a public-private partnership to help raise funds for the playground equipment itself. So that was a really, really good event. Also, just late last month, out at GTCC, there was the First in Flight Chapter of Fame, the Advanced Manufacturing. Governor Cooper was, was in town and Toyota is a very big sponsor, obviously, for advanced manufacturing. They have a vested interest and it's just exciting to know that Toyota isn't here yet, but they're here and they're making an impact and they're making an investment for economic development and for training and for education for the residents here in Greensboro. Also want to, also piggyback on, on violence and crime. In the past month, the past week, past days, we've, we've all heard the news, we've seen the news, the eight-year-old sleeping in the bed, there, there have been other instances. And we're going to have to take a stand on this, you know, each and every one of us individually. Say something. If you know something, say something. If you, if you've heard something, say something. It's just important that, that we care about each other, we respect one another, and that we take this issue of crime and violence very, very seriously. The last thing that I have is more of a personal note. I'm very happy to announce- I'm very happy to announce that my wife and I have a new addition to our family. We have a, we have a new grandson. Thank you. Hudson Mackay, and we're very excited, we're very happy. It's a big smile on our faces and it will never go away. So we have joined the ranks of, of grand parenthood and it is a wonderful place to be, I'll tell you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
I want to invite you tomorrow evening at four o'clock for the Freedom Cornerstone that's on the Greenway at the corner of Morrow Boulevard and Gate City Boulevard. Come and see this. It's going to be a real attraction. I think when we asked the artists, we wanted to have something that would make you go wow when you pass by, but there's a lot of history in the way that the art is done. So come and hear and see and just be a part of that. Tomorrow evening at four o'clock at the corner of Morrow and Gate City Boulevard.
Thank you.
Today I was in your stead at the Skylar, Skylar Credit Union on Yanseville. It was formerly Premier Credit Union and they have merged and it's Skylar Credit Union. They are glad to be a part of Greensboro. They started in, in Charlotte and now they're in nine other counties in North Carolina. So they have us here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before you get started, you can be the last, but I had forgotten this because I was so excited about the school. But the red light camera, you know, we put the other camera piece on our legislative agenda, but we don't need legislation for that. I believe we have currently something already. And I think we need to really explore that. I'm gonna, um, schedule the talk again with Chairman Hayes of the School Board. So I'd like a little pull together, a little bit more information as we talk around that. And the reason why it's so pressing, just this past week, an 81-year-old, um, lost her life because a 21-year-old ran the red light at random and it met a, and so it's, it's very dangerous, it's scary. So, um, it's not going to solve everything, but we got to find ways to slow people down. And the community keeps asking me for speed bumps, you know, I get speed bump requests every day and we don't do them, but, um, so if we can look into that.
So that was one of the four action items that we gave staff the Thursday of the strategy session. They have 30 days to come back about the red light cameras that we already have legislation for. And then regarding the, the school, we're going to have to have conversations with the school board to help with the cost and maintenance.
Yeah, and I'd like us to go on and maybe not wait too long to have that discussion and, you know, maybe start that discussion.
And, and if we had an agreement, that might, um, help our delegation that they see that the, the school board and the city would like this together.
Would like it, right, correct.
Yeah, schedule it. Yeah, thank you. So just two quick things. The end of January, I got to go to A and T for the Ronald McNair Memorial Luncheon. And I've been doing this probably for about 10 years. It is the 37th, I want to say anniversary memory of the Challenger explosion. He was 37 when, when he went up in the Challenger and it was the first time his family was in attendance. He had a brother who was 10 months apart from him and it was really moving to sit there with the family. And, you know, often we same name, see names on buildings and we forget the things they did and he is a true American hero. And, you know, we need to lift stories up, like just somebody who, you know, went on to be a physicist and then an astronaut is just, it was really an uplifting luncheon. Lastly, I do want to talk about a series that I saw the other night. It was World's Worst Jobs or World's Dirtiest Jobs? Yes, it was World's Dirtiest Jobs and they did a sewer repair. They did a manhole repair and it was really pretty disgusting. And the reason why I bring that up is because we have people on our staff that do that work. And when we talk about things that field ops and water resources do, I'd love you to go back and watch this because we ask them every day to do that as part of their jobs. And while we, we lift up public safety and I think rightly so, we also have to recognize what field ops, water resources and all the rest of our employees are doing. But to actually see that sewer repair and the grossness that they were putting up with was, um, was pretty interesting. I'll see if I can find it on YouTube and, um, I'll send it to everybody. But we have to remember that there are people who do that day in and day out and we have to make sure that they get the appreciation for that being part of their job description. So that's all I have. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to council for, you know, diving in deep during the last strategy session. Thank you. So on February 16th, we will come to you and share with you how it all comes together in terms of your strategic framework, the proposed division, the goals that you set, priorities and all of that. We'll, we'll bring that to you on the 16th. But that will also be an opportunity for our city clerk, just like Mayor said today, to kind of talk to us about the process and some of the things that we're doing behind the scenes that will help you and help us better, especially on days like this during council meetings. So I look forward to that. But thank you once again for taking the time to be present those two days. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't have anything.
Motion to adjourn? Move for Mr. Holton, seconded by Ms. Abuzwehder, on favor, say aye. We are adjourned.